It is 7:00 PM and I will bring this meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Dambrosio.
Here.
Trustee McDonald. Trustee Mosip.
Here.
Trustee Pachakoff.
Here.
Trustee Watts.
Here.
Chair Thorpe.
Here. Next item?
Approval of minutes, approval of minutes for the following board trustees meetings, regular board trustees meetings, September 18th, 2023. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move to approve these minutes.
So move.
Support.
Motion by trustee Dambrosio and supported by trustee Barry. Are there any corrections that are needed to be made from the minutes that were presented? Hearing none, may I attach unanimous roll?
Sure.
Please do. Next item?
Recognition and acknowledgements.
Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, thank you to President Cavalluna and Chair Thorpe and members of the Board. My name is Ashley Davis. This is my second year at Henry Ford College. I'm studying journalism and sociology and I eventually plan to transfer to the University of Michigan. When I arrived on campus last summer from my hometown of Kalamazoo, I was afraid and nervous and I lacked the confidence that I would belong here. After a bad experience at another community college, I worried that I would just be another number in the crowd here. However, within a year of my arrival at HFC, I have experienced phenomenal growth personally, academically, and professionally, thanks to the love, support, and instruction that I have received here. I'm now Honors College student. I'm now creative editor of the campus newspaper. I'm a member of the Black Male and Queens Focus Group and I've won two state awards for my writing from the Mirror News. Also, as a young black woman, it is especially inspiring to me to see black women like Athletic Director Rochelle Taylor and Dr. Courtney Matthews in leadership positions on Henry Ford's campus. I can confidently say that I've been placed on the trajectory for success as an HFC student and I feel blessed that it took me planting roots here for things to finally fall into place for me. Now, I am pleased to read this month's HFC Board acknowledgements. Congratulations to HFC student Zana Eljilahawi, who submitted an abstract presentation at the Annual Biomedical Research Conference for Minoritized Scientists 2023. She received a letter informing her that the abstract entitled "Using E. coli as a biological indicator in Michigan's natural water sources for public health monitoring" has been accepted and will be given a poster presentation at ABR CMS 2023 in Phoenix, Arizona, on November 15th through the 18th. Zana has been awarded full travel support, which includes flight, hotel, registration, and meals. Beginning in fall 2023, HFC will offer its first master's degree pathway through an articulation agreement with Wayne State University. Students will earn their bachelor's in science and culinary arts from HFC and transfer to Wayne University's Mike Ilitch's School of Business, Master of Business Administration. Students who complete this Bachelor of Science in Culinary Arts degree with a GPA of 2.5 or higher and grades of C 2.0 or higher are eligible. Students following this pathway will have the GRE/GMAT requirement waived. The MBA must be completed, can be completed, excuse me, in as short as 18 months. Congratulations to the School of BEPD. Congratulations to the Hospitality Studies Program for being recertified for the next seven years. The American Culinary Federation Education Foundation Accrediting Commission, ACFEF, recently met and approved HFC's request for programmatic accreditation. The commission has given our school a grant of accreditation through June 2030 for the following programs. Associate's Degree in Hospitality Studies with a focus on Culinary Arts and the Associate Degree in Culinary Arts with a focus on baking and pastries. Both associate's degrees were identified as exemplary by ACFEF and received the highest programmatic allow, award allowed, excuse me. The HFC Counseling Department is pleased to announce the grand reopening of the Career Resource Center, which took place on October 2nd. There has been significant excitement surrounding this event as the CRC has been closed since the COVID-19 pandemic. Counselor Wendy Lee Jenkins has led the reopening planning and is excited to offer career-related support once again to our students. Students can seek assistance and use the career assessment tool called Focus 2. Additionally, students can work to explore career options and consider what academic programs may suit them depending on their interests. Thank you for the opportunity to be this month's reader. Do you have any questions that I can answer for you?
Well, thank you, Ms. Davis. I just had the pleasure of meeting Ms. Davis' trustees and I'm not surprised you're going into journalism because you have a really great command of presentation and poise. I don't know how old you are, but you don't look old enough to be as poised as you are. So you don't look nervous?
I'm 32.
Okay. All right. Well, you still are way more poised than I was when I was 32 years old and I'm a lot older than 32 right now. Thank you so much for being here and thank you so much for giving yourself a second chance at a community college. I'm really excited that you're having a good time here, but I also want you to know we're open to feedback about what may not be working well and if you want to give us some feedback about that now or at another time, that'd be just great. And I also am interested in what you plan to do when you do leave HFC because it seems clear to me that HFC will not be your final stop on your way up to bigger and brighter things.
Okay. I feel like I've had the pleasure of not really having many negative experiences here as of yet. I do, I don't know if it's a negative, but one thing that I did struggle with was finding a community and being able to connect with other black students. I had a hard time finding out where they were and so that was one of the reasons why I joined the Focus Group and I feel like that was one of the ways that helped me feel more grounded here and also my association with the Mirror News. And when I plan to leave HFC, I plan to transfer to U of M. I'm not sure if I want to go to Dearborn or Ann Arbor. I feel like I'm open to either or. It really just depends on what opportunities open up for me. But I just also want to say that one thing in particular that set aside Henry Ford from my other community college experiences was the attentiveness. Like I mentioned before, I felt like I just kind of disappeared in the school that I was before and not only when I arrived here, but prior to my arrival, there was constantly someone. I don't know who these people were, but there were constantly people in contact with me asking me what I needed. Even I was a little late getting into a particular class, so I missed an assignment and I guess it flagged something on my account. And so someone reached out to me and it wasn't like, oh, why didn't you turn in the assignment? It was more of, hey, we see you didn't get a chance to turn this in. How can we support you? Are there resources that you don't have access to? Is there anything that we can do to make you feel better supported so you can show up academically? And I had never experienced anything like that in my previous school. I was, after registration, I was just never contacted to or spoken to before. So I feel like it, Henry Ford has made it very difficult for you to fall through the cracks. And I think that's a good thing, but I do feel like I wish there were more instances of black and brown or just general campus solidarity because my sentiments, I've also talked with other black students and they've expressed similar sentiments about struggling to feel like they belong on campus or finding a place for them to be able to discuss their experiences on campus. But I wish that I had discovered Henry Ford when I left Loy Norx, but I'm glad that things aligned in a way for me to be here now. And like I said before, I feel very blessed to be here and that things seem to fall into place once I got here.
Yeah, well, thank you for giving me such candid feedback. Trustees, for those of you who don't know, Loy Norx is a rather large high school in the Kalamazoo Public School System that has a really nice park right across the street that when I was, when I was a little guy, I was on that park a lot. So I used to look at the high school students at Norx. In any event, Ms. Davis, if you're willing, I'd like to spend some more time with you to learn more about the belonging aspect you talked about. I think you have a unique opportunity to kind of give me a better window into how we can do better on that. So I'm probably going to have my colleague Patty Flogus reach out to you and I'll even buy you lunch if you're willing to spend some time with me. The second thing I want to ask is, do you remember that when someone reached out and said, you very clearly described what it was like to have someone reach out to you, not in an alarming way, but in a helping way? Do you remember, was that person your instructor? Was that person from an advising office or?
No, it wasn't my instructor for the particular class. I want to say it was a representative from another department.
Okay.
I maybe, I might still have the email. I can do a little bit of digging to see, but it wasn't my particular instructor. So I think that's what struck out to me in particular. It wasn't my teacher following up, it was someone else.
Okay.
So I think my teacher put the alert on my account for someone to check in with me.
Okay. Did you say that alert word because you'd heard it before or, because that's what we call that, is an early alert?
Oh, I'm not sure. I just called it an alert because I just was like, oh, okay, I need to talk to someone.
All right, all right. But it was a good interaction, I take it.
Oh, yeah. It was amazing. I never experienced anything like that before.
Last question, do you remember, don't spend hours looking for it, but if it's easy to pull up, send it to me because I'd like to compliment whoever got involved in that.
Yeah.
But do you remember, was it this semester, two semesters ago generally?
It was my very first semester, so fall semester last year.
Fall, okay. All right. Michael and Holly, we're living proof here. In real life, it's taken four years, but we got there.
But it's working.
We got there. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Davis. The other trustees may have questions.
Trustees, trustee Batlukchov?
Well, first off, thank you for the presentation. As Mr. Cavalluna said, it was very well articulated and I enjoyed hearing the presentation from somebody who is looking to express herself in a variety of ways. What I'm really confused about is Kalamazoo is not like next door. How did you come to be in this area and reach us?
Previously, when I graduated, I originally went to Wayne State University. That was in 2009, so I'm somewhat familiar with at least the Detroit, metro Detroit area. And then I moved back to Kalamazoo. I was having some issues with my mental health and some other things. So I met my partner about three or four years ago and he was a graduate of U of M Dearborn and he had some colleagues that were familiar with not only that school, but here. And I was just telling him the things that I wanted to do and when I wanted to go back to school and he was just like, oh, well, have you heard of Henry Ford College? Like, you know, it's not, you know, it's a small, it's a modest college. They have a lot of connections, they have a lot of resources. It was like, for what you want to do, I think it would be a really good place for you to get your foot in the door. So when I did my research and I did my background information on some of the programs and stuff and as far as like the bridge programs to other universities, I felt like this was a good fit for me. So I ended up actually moving here with my partner after I quit my job last year to move here. And prior to that, I was actually managing a COVID response shelter. So when they transformed the hotels into shelters for homeless people, that was my job before I came here.
That was a big leap of faith to make that move, so I applaud you.
Thank you.
And taking that step and I'm so happy we were able to provide you with the inspiration, I guess, or direction that you were looking for, it is rewarding. And I went to U of M Dearborn, so it's a good school. If you want to stay in the area and not have to make another move again or do a lot of driving, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, I really enjoy the area.
Are you planning on going, pursuing journalism and writing?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. That and sociology as well.
Well, that's a, that's a unique combination.
Yeah, I feel like with journalism, I feel like the sociology aspect, having that understanding of the world of people, why people do what they do, what influences the choices people feel they have, I feel like all of those things will help to inform my writing, especially, you know, in the recent years with everything that's been going on with the press and, you know, fact checking and I feel like it's important to really have that full understanding when you're writing to inform other people.
Great. Well, I hope you have the best years ahead of you.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions from the trustees? Thank you very much for being here. You are not required to stick around for the rest of the day.
Yeah, I have some bio homeworks.
Good luck.
So yeah, if I'm going to stay in Honors College, I got to take care of that. Thank you, everyone. It was a pleasure. Everyone greeted me, everyone smiled at me. That made me feel much less nervous than I was. So thank you. I would probably come again because I know you guys expressed that you want the student body to be a little bit more present here and be able to give input, so I promise that I won't be a stranger.
Well, we won't be a stranger to you, at least I won't. I can promise you that.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Everyone have a good night.
You too.
Night.
Me too.
Next item?
President's items.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, trustees. I will be shorter than usual because we have more than the normal amount of reports for this board meeting and I want to get through them, so I'll be brief in my comments. And mostly, most, all of them are going to be congratulatory. The first is something that I neglected to do when we were last together and I regret it, but it does give me an opportunity to take this congratulatory message to the very top of my messages and that is to congratulate the leader of the AFO, who is the president of that collective bargaining unit, Dr. Lynn Boza, for having guided her team through yet another collective bargaining process for what you all trustees ratified as a new collective bargaining agreement last time we were here. And I'll just be candid, as President Boza would probably tell you, I think I saw President Boza.
She is.
This, you know, we're living right now in a time when collective bargaining can sometimes be a difficult and sometimes publicly difficult process. And I think if President Boza were candid with you, she'd say this one wasn't as smooth as previous, but it still ended in a good result. There were no incidences of major difficulties and there was a unanimous vote from this body and a nearly unanimous vote from the membership of Dr. Boza's group. And so, Dr. Boza, I just would like for you to stand and let the board congratulate you on a good leadership. I think, what was it, seven, what was it, what was the final vote, like 97 to three or something like that?
Three voted no.
Three voted no.
One more, Mike.
All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Boza. Second, I didn't have this on my list, but I do want to say to Vice President Holly Diamond, Vice President Michael Nealan, and anyone else who's involved in the early alert process, I mean, that was pretty great. I couldn't have planted that one better. That, that was fantastic. Trustees, you probably know, one of the things we've been trying very, very diligently in doing is what Ms. Davis just explained. It's really hard to change the process that we interact with students on and I just, I could never have imagined we'd have a student describe an early alert intervention where on top of, on top of everything, it included, I didn't feel like I was getting hectored by someone who I was in trouble with. I felt like someone was reaching out and supporting me. So I know there are a lot of people who built that process and continue to build it to a stronger place, but I just want to congratulate Vice Presidents Diamond and Nealan for what they did and I'm sure that they were somewhat serendipitously surprised by that also. We do have birthdays among us. Tomorrow will be a very big day for who I think might be the youngest member of our Board, but he'll turn one more year older tomorrow on the 17th and I hope he's going to have time with his family and he won't have to be at a board meeting, I'm sure of that. So congratulations and happy birthday, trustee Mosip. She's not here, but a week from today, trustee McDonald will turn one year younger and we'll regale her next month. I want to also congratulate and thank Holly Diamond and her team, mostly Chad Austin, but several other people who took part in Discover Day and planned it. I think we had, was it 1,400 students, maybe 1,200 students?
Yeah, almost 1,400.
And I had left out Rhonda, so Rhonda, Vice President DeLong. If you didn't see it, I saw trustee Barry's wife snap a picture of me and then I shamelessly stole it and put it on my social media, but if you didn't see it, in real life, it was something to behold, almost 1,400 students from all over our region coming to our campus in one morning to see and feel what it feels like. It was very well done. Two more things and then I'll be done. Later this week or probably next week, we're going to be announcing what we think is a historical agreement that, or historic agreement that I can point to several vice presidents like Rhonda DeLong and like Amy Clark, but there's really just one real champion for this agreement and that's Michael Nealan. And the agreement will be what we believe will be the first time that a health employer is saying to our students, not only will we help you financially while you're in our curriculum at HFC, we'll also get you better and more opportunities to learn in the field, in the hospital, here in Dearborn, and if you do X, Y, and Z, which are very doable things, to pass tests and have academic success, then we will guarantee you a job. It is extraordinarily exciting for us. I hope we'll have an announcement to make in the future. In fact, I know we will, but I wanted here in front of everyone that is so close to the institution to be able to see and know that that was a product of a lot of work, but really no one championed it better and it really is just day after day after day, Michael Nealan, not that he had any other things to do, but he was the one that can be credited with this, what I think is a historic agreement. So when you see him, please do, trustees, thank him for his effort and then we'll be announcing when we're going to make this public announcement. And, you know, he had a lot to do with these, in fact, one of the most things to do with these transfer agreements for which he couldn't attend the ceremony. So, Michael, I am promising you, we're not going to schedule anything unless you can be at it with the Corwell announcement.
Sending an early alert.
Yeah. And the last thing I'll just say before I stop is, and take your questions, trustees, is I can't imagine what it would be like to fill Kathy Dimitri's shoes. I don't know what that would be like, but we've had someone who's now in their third week doing that and one of the biggest, most difficult things to do is support the trustees and the president and the vice presidents coming up to the culmination of a monthly meeting. And I just want to tell you how proud and excited I am to work with Patty. She's been doing a fantastic job. I do encourage you to reach out to her just as you would with Kathy. She's got Kathy on a lifeline and we both call her often, but I will tell you, Patty is more than able to take over and do it and I've seen her do it and today's board meeting is another example of that. So I will say to you, Patty, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I hope you enjoy the work and we're all glad to have you. And so trustees, that's my report and I'll take any questions.
Any questions for President Cavalluna? One that I will ask you about is with the current Middle East conflict, has the college been doing anything or setting anything up to support staff and students that are being
Well, the answer to that is yes. Any, any student who has concerns or feels the need for support has been greeted with the full panoply of supports that we have. I will tell you that I, as the main spokesperson of the college, have elected to be reflective and calm and to think through and watch rather than offer the college's voice into the sometimes full arena of voices. And I don't want anyone to mistake that, that if a student, whatever their persuasion or their fears or concerns on this issue were to be in need, that they should come to me directly or any of the various things that we have. And of course, you know, trustee or Chairman Thorpe, counseling, advising, mental health services are things we take a lot of pride in and have full-time staff to help with.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item, special reports and audit presentation for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2023, Vice President Zakowski.
I will just introduce my morandine, which most of you have had experience with in prior years. And so Dana has a partner in charge, Courtney, Jennifer, that was our full team this year and they'll give you the results for 2023.
Good evening. Happy to be here this evening to provide to you the results of our audit. I am Dana Coombs. I served as the engagement partner for the college audit this year. I have with me Courtney Heller, who served as the engagement senior manager, and Jen Longo, who served as the engagement manager. Happy to report that we provide, will be providing a clean, unmodified audit opinion. That's the best audit opinion that you can receive. We met with the audit committee in advance of this meeting to go through the audit results in detail, but also happy to report we did not have any audit adjustments, nor did we have any compliance findings as a result of our audit, which is fantastic. So would like to congratulate John Zakowski, Kevin Color, Barb Oysterhold, and Brian Bame for all of their hard work and effort that goes into this. I think, you know, the last several years, we've provided this report and, you know, it, you kind of get used to it versus celebrating it because there is a lot of work that goes into this and so appreciate all of the efforts that the team put into it. So we're going to go through an audit presentation that covers the financial highlights, but happy to address any questions that the Board has. Jen up?
Thank you, Dana, and hi, everyone. I'll start with our first slide. We first wanted to present the college's total net position and this chart represents the current year and also the prior two years as well. You'll see in the middle of the chart that total net position has increased from the prior year. Last year was about 29.4 million and this year is about an 8.2 million net deficit, so overall an increase. And the main reason for that increase is the increase in net investment in capital assets and the reason that that increase is a result of state funding that the college received to fund the college's technology building renovations during the year. Along with that, you'll see the unrestricted net position has also continued to steadily increase. And then on the bottom of this chart, you'll see that we're presenting the college's proportionate share of the net pension and OPEB liability, which the college is required to report under GASB 68 and 75. And if the college were not required to report that, total net position would be larger, about 137 million. This next slide represents the general fund net position, which, and it's only that fund for this slide and one you're probably used to hearing about. You'll see here that the total net position also increased there from 15.6 million to 16.8 million. And in that second column there, we're also presenting again the pension and OPEB liability fund, which again also showed an increase in the deficit. And in total, when looking at both, there's again a total increase. And then this slide here, the third slide, this represents the unrestricted net position of the college and that includes both the general fund and the auxiliary fund. The general fund we discussed on the previous slide and the auxiliary fund is a separate fund that also includes the bookstore type revenues and also the cafe. So you'll see the general fund has continued to increase from 2018 and through current and even in years prior to 2018, you know, we've continued to see steady increases there. With the auxiliary fund remaining relatively consistent and overall, when you're looking at both, total unrestricted net position has continued to increase, about a million-dollar increase from the previous year. And I'll pass it over to Courtney to finish off the presentation.
Thanks, Jen. Great. On the side in front of you, we've got a breakdown of the general fund revenue. So we've got a visual here to show the different categories of revenue. The tuition and fees continue to be the most significant component of revenue for the college, about 45%. We also want to point out on the right-hand side, there's some information from similar peer institutions on their makeup of general fund revenue as well. You'll notice that property taxes is a much larger portion of revenue for other similar institutions and that's just as a result of the difference in the property tax base for Henry Ford College. On the next slide, we have the general fund expenditures. We have a breakdown here. We like to point out that the instruction and instructional support really should be looked at together. So when those two are put together, it's about 57% of the expenditures are spent on instruction, instructional support. On the right-hand side, we have a similar chart that shows what peer institutions have for their breakdown of expenditures. You'll see there that if you add up the instruction and instructional support, the makeup of total expenses is similar as a percentage between the institutions. Also wanted to point out that bad debt expense is up in that high chart in the top right and continues to be managed and decreased over time. Moving to the final slide, we have here, we have total revenue and total expenses with that blue line being total revenue. You'll see that both revenue and expense have increased and that management has done a very nice job of managing expenses so that it has stayed below revenue over time and continues to do so. And that takes us through our presentation. Any questions? And that takes us through our presentation. Any questions you have for us?
Doesn't look like it.
Question.
Oh, Trustee Moses.
Yeah. Were there any recommendations for management with the report?
Yeah. So each year, we go through, I'd say, and look for areas that we might say, you know, this is a best practice, but certainly nothing of concern. So we had a couple items we covered in the meeting before this, but definitely no control issues, as Dana pointed out. I'd say very clean report overall.
There was one item that was mentioned about a new standard that we're going to start implementing the coming year from the accounting principles.
Yes, there will be GASB 101, which is related to compensated absences, so bringing more liabilities on the balance sheet potentially. That will not be effective next year. That'll be in 2025. So, management gets a reprieve from implementing new accounting standards.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item, discussion items, tuition policy, President Kavaluna.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Trustees, the last time we were together, we had a proposed change in the tuition policy that engendered a significant discussion and requests for information. I'd like to go through what's taken place since we last were together, and then ask you to consider the potential next steps. So what you have in your packet and what was circulated to you before this board meeting is the latest draft of this policy, and it adds my team's best effort at addressing several of the concerns that were brought, both at the meeting and then thereafter. And in the draft that you have before you, I'll just tell you that the font on that draft is a little different as the document continues. And that's a mistake, but it actually is a pretty easy way for you to identify the new language. One thing that was concerning to some trustees was when the board would get an idea of what the Consumer Price Index was. And so this has been changed to say on or about February 1st of each year. There was also concern raised about whether future boards would know that with no board action, the tuition rates would change to track the CPI with, of course, the ceiling and the basement in effect. And so a line was added that says if the board does not take any action on this new, on the new tuition rates effective in the fall semester, the new tuition rate will apply. There was also concern raised about whether this policy would take an opportunity for the board to use its authority and remove it for longer than a future board would want. And so there was discussion about what is often described as a sunset provision, and the last sentence of this current draft reads, "The board will review this policy every two years to determine whether it should continue or be modified." During the discussion, Mr. Chairman, trustees discussed data for our tuition rates that I circulated to trustees on. And, you know what, I missed one thing also. There was some discussion about whether and if this policy would entitle the board to similar explanation of data in comparative institutions. And I added one line to deal with that, which notes that along with the notice the board will receive from the president or designate a report of the new tuition rates, which will reflect the CPI adjustment. And on an annual basis, the college will provide the board with tuition rates of community colleges with comparable student enrollments. Now, trustees, I still do ask for your thoughtful review of this. It has been changed substantively, so the board bylaws would require this to be a discussion item today for just that discussion, and then if necessary, a vote for it to be an action item at the next time you all come to meet. And I'm hopeful that the questions that the board raised, the concerns that the board raised, were addressed in both the information I circulated to the board, but also the changes that were made to this policy. There was one more question, I believe, the trustee asked if there were other institutions that followed this type of policy, and I was unable to find any other than Lake Michigan College, which, as you recall, this current draft is modeled after. And so I'm happy to take any questions that trustees have on both the substance and the road forward for this proposal.
I will call on a couple of the trustees that had questions previously. Trustee Barry, one of your concerns was future boards and how they would have to deal with this policy. You've had a chance to see some of the language that says that we'd be reviewing it every two years. Does this address some of the concerns that you've got?
I'm satisfied with that change.
Okay. Trustee Moses, you had asked for the information on other colleges. And the one thing that we'll never be able to do is, we won't know what the other colleges are doing real time. We'll always be able to see what they just did when we did something. But when it's, when we're giving the information, does this help with some of those concerns that you had?
Not really, to be honest. I didn't think the added information convinced me to go the other route of supporting this change. I'm still firm believing that we consider things as they come. As far as tuition increases, we don't know the future. We can't predict it. And putting this in place is not in the best interest of our students, as tuition hikes are happening all over. However, it needs to be studied every year and rendered for a decision by this board for our students. So I don't see much added value unless I could hear from the president or other trustees on what benefit, huge benefit, this helps the students and the college.
So, Trustee Moses, if I hear what you're saying, while we would enact, potentially enact a policy that would automatically increase the tuition based on inflation, you'd want to be able to see what else changed in the numbers to justify that change in the tuition rate. Did that summarize what you're saying?
Well, we don't just base it on inflation. There are so many other variables that come to play when it comes to raising tuition. We have been doing that almost every year. Sometimes we don't raise tuition when certain situations happen, like COVID situation, where we felt like students would have a huge burden covering tuition, especially for those who are not awarded financial aid. So I say, the administration would bring us a recommendation to increase tuition by a certain percentage, and justifying that with being inflation and the CPI being one of the information or one of the pieces to justify raising tuition, but it should not be the only one.
Okay. I think I've got an understanding of what you're saying. And in this policy, the board still has the ability to act on it. It would only automatically go up by the CPI if the board chooses not to act on it. So to speak, we would just be accepting it. Would that, is, was that what you would think, Dr. President Kavaluna?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on the proposed tuition policy? Then we'll have it as an action item for the next meeting. Next item?
Next item, the millage proposal, Vice President Zadkowski.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I'm not Vice President Zadkowski, but I will be introducing him after a short presentation. My colleague Paul will put a PowerPoint on the screen there that you all trustees have in paper form there in front of you. This goes through a very brief history of our millage in Henry Ford College. But I will start it by saying, I am asking the board to review and consider allowing the citizens of Dearborn to continue four mills of tax for property owners. And my hope is to give you some background about what we do with that amount of property tax mills and what we would do if it were renewed. Before we have this conversation, I will say, I continue to be open to meet with any trustee who wants more information about this and who wishes to give me more feedback on it. If we do decide to ask the voters to allow us to continue to tax them, we would be well-placed to tell the clerk's office, if my proposal, and my proposal is a renewal of four mills, if my proposal is approved by this board, we would need to tell the clerk's office by December. So this is a discussion item today, and would be, if it has the support of this board, it would be an action item at your next board meeting in November. The election would be the United States presidential primary election, which looks like it's going to be in February of next year. After this short presentation, I'm going to ask Vice President Zadkowski to give you a short explanation of what we would do with a significant capital expansion project on the campus, using frankly, a little bit more than half of one mill, but absolutely one-half of one mill. So, let's start off with this PowerPoint. What you have here on your first slide is the total revenue per full-year equivalent student, and this is from the last year. What you have here is if every community college were put into a process where we could kind of, as best as possible, compare apples to apples, you would have the full-year equivalent student, which takes all of your credit hours at a college and divides it by 12, which is a full-time student. And we do that because, unlike universities, our community college and most community colleges don't have the majority of students taking full-time credits. In fact, the majority of students at HFC and elsewhere take less than 12 credits. We'd like to change that, but the reality is, the best way to compare apples to apples is to take all the credits a college is producing and divide it by 12 to see how many, that artificial number, which is FYES. You're going to hear me continually refer to FYES, but that is the arithmetic underpinning of that phrase. And the statewide average that each college gets, and most colleges have the same three pillars that we have, tuition, property tax, and state aid. You put all those together, and the statewide average is a bit under $20,000 per FYES. The rest of the graph to the right are the community colleges that are in the region where we sit. And you can see that, with the exception of Macomb Community College, we have the lowest amount of revenue per full-year equivalent student. And again, each one of these graphs is an aggregate of the property tax, the tuition, and the state aid that each institution gets per FYES. You can see those that are doing a little bit better than us. And of course, this will aggregate, because this is only per student, which is a nice transition to the next graph, which talks about one of the major pillars in those three. Again, tuition revenue, state aid revenue, and property tax revenue. This rendition is the property tax revenue per full-year equivalent student. And I know this is not new to this board because of our unique, small geographic area, but just as a reality check, statewide average for community colleges, they get a little less than $7,000 per student from property taxes. You look across those that are in our region, and you can see that Henry Ford College is, per student, bringing in less than $2,000, far below our sister and brother community colleges in our region. And the next slide tells you about what that looks like in just real dollars. If you look at real dollars, not looking at FYES, this graph shows you how much money Henry Ford College receives as an aggregate based on property taxes. And the statewide average and across the state, you know, there are 28 community colleges that range from several hundred students to, like us, in the teens and high teens of thousands, so 17, 18, 19,000 students. The total revenue that Henry Ford College brings in is less than $20 million. Now, this graph shows you everyone in our state, I'm sorry, the statewide average, and then everyone in our region. And then below it, in parentheses, shows you how many students or how many credit hours we're putting out with that amount of property tax. And of course, it's divided and crunched into FYES, which you all know is the full-year equivalent student. But you can see, the large community colleges in the state, frankly, are Macomb with 11,000 FYES, Oakland, a little bit less than 9,500 FYES, Washtenaw down the street, about 7,500 FYES. And each one of those institutions are bringing in respectively 40, 80 million, almost 100 million, Washtenaw, almost 60 million. And then, you all know this, the average institution brings in more than $20 million in property taxes to serve far fewer students than us. And of course, there on the far right is Henry Ford College, serving almost 8,000 FYES, the third largest in our region, and frankly, the third largest in the state. We're just a little bit more FYES than Grand Rapids. And yet, Monroe Community College, that is serving about a fifth of the number of students we are, almost the same amount of property tax. That should not be surprised. We all know that. But that is the reality, that the four mills generates. The next graph is how this feels to the average person in Dearborn who owns property. This graph shows you the property tax on a home that's worth $200,000, which, as you know, would be taxable to an SEV amount, half of that, or $100,000. The best we could determine was that the average house in Dearborn is less than $200,000. I believe that we calculated it somewhere just south of $170,000 of fair market value. But in order to show you what, we aired on the side of caution and picked a homeowner that would pay a little bit more, and that would be a homeowner whose property value would be around $200,000 or $100,000 of taxable value. And we gave you what shows a 13-year history. And you can see that from 2009 to 2014, the taxpayers in Dearborn were paying three mills. And the amount that each taxpayer paid during those years went down as a result of the declining property values in Dearborn and across the state. And then in 2015, to try to catch up to some of that lost revenue, the college added a fourth mill, and that has been the case all the way until now. The, you'll see that, and by the way, this is not adjusted for inflation. So the property, the college was bringing in $300 on three mills 13 years, 14 years ago. And just three years ago, the college, four years ago, the college caught up to that, not inflation-adjusted $300. And today, if these four mills continue, a property tax owner would be paying, if they owned a house that was worth $200,000, they'd be paying $340,000 for, and I know I'm biased about this, but I believe the data shows it to be true, one of and probably the best focused community college in the state. That is a full-service community college. There is nothing that we haven't tried, and a few programs we don't offer, but the vast majority of our programs are what you describe as a full-service community college for a taxpayer paying $340. I would go so far as to say to you, and trustees, I do need you to know, I'm fully supportive of this, and much of what I'm telling you is objective fact, but I will sometimes start to go into the area of asking you to consider this and using my persuasive voice. And I would say, a homeowner who owns a house that is worth $400,000 is still getting an outstanding return on investment. an outstanding return on investment for paying less than $800 a year to have a community college that offers as much as we offer. And I could go on and on about that, but I know you all know how much we offer. The next slide though, is what some trustees believed, and I supported them, we should look at. Wait a second, I went too far there. And that was, well, what would happen if we lost that one mill that we added? If you remember, we added this, man, gotta be light on the draw with this clicker. In 2015, we added that fourth mill, and if we went back to those years before 2015, what would happen? So the first thing we would lose is about $3.75 million of property tax value. And the state of Michigan recognized this, I don't remember when, but I believe it was during the Snyder administration, and I don't say that as a political statement, I just don't remember the year it was, but it's continued there forward. And the state policy was to try to disincentivize local taxing units from reducing their property tax. And the way they did that was they connected their own, the state's own, personal property tax value with a decrease in a local property tax. So what that means is, if you are Smithville and you want to reduce your property taxes, the state tried to stop you or disincentivize you from doing that by saying, "Okay, Smithville, if you reduce your property taxes, we are going to also reduce what we had previously given you under what was a law called the personal property tax." And so, it's a bit of a double whammy. If you reduce your property taxes, the state will come back and say, "Well, we're also not going to cover up some of the personal property taxes." That's not a political statement, it's just a statement of fact. And a one-mill reduction to Henry Ford College would render about $5.2 million less in revenue. And so, if we wanted to do that, I felt it was my duty to give you options. And one option would be to take our in-district tuition and move it from where it sits now, which I believe is the third from the bottom, it's certainly in the very, very close to the bottom, but move it from the in-district tuition across the state to the middle of the road, which would be a $20 per credit increase, and move it from $111 to $131. And that would generate to you, the college, another $2.2 million. So you're starting to make up the difference that you've lost in one mill equating to $5.1 million. Now, I also wanted you to be aware of where that would hit. Who pays that at in-district rate? Well, a lot of it would be from dual enrollment, from the Dearborn Public Schools, because 30,000 credit hours come to us from Henry, see, I blur the two. It's not Henry Ford District. Comes to us from Dearborn Public Schools District, and that would give us $670,000 more of revenue. And then of course, the non-Dearborn Public School students who are still in-district students, say, you know, Jim Thorpe decided he was going to enroll here, he would pay in-district tuition, and those students with the higher tuition rate would bring in about $1.5 million. That gives you the $2.2 million of revenue if you took off the mill and raised tuition rates to the middle of the pack for in-district tuition. Now you might ask, "Well, why didn't you bump up out-of-district tuition rates?" And the answer there is, we could do that, but we're already sort of in the middle of, actually, in the middle of the pack for out-of-district tuition rates, and we're in a hyper-competitive place. There are three community colleges in our county, no other county has that in the state. Some counties don't even have one community college. And as you saw, we have a bunch of other community colleges near us, but not in our county. And so, competition is pretty stiff, but yet, we still provide a product that is so valuable, the majority of our students come from out-of-district, paying a higher amount than they could pay for their in-district tuition where they live. We do feel pretty strongly that if we were to increase our tuition rates for out-of-district tuition, we would start to lose that strategic advantage there that we currently benefit from. So what you see here is, if we took this marginal step, reduced by one mill, increased in-district tuition to the middle of the pack, which is a $20 increase, we'd still have to find $3 million to cover if we didn't want to cut the college. And I'll just tell you, $3 million is 3.1% of our budget, and there really is no way to cut the budget there without talking about either positions, which is employees, or programs. And the most expensive programs on this college's campus are academic programs, as it should be. You just saw Plant Moran identify that the vast majority of the monies we spend go towards classroom or students, or the connection between classrooms and students. So if we decided we wanted to cut one mill, and we did want to try to reduce that reduction by upping our tuition for in-district to the middle of the pack, we would then go about trying to find about $3 million of programs and/or employees to reduce the overall budget. If we didn't do that, we just raised tuition to the middle of the pack for in-district, we'd be down, as I mentioned, about $3 million a year, and this graph shows you the aggregate of each year. If you didn't deal with those shortfalls, you'd be, very quickly by 2026, you'd be in the place where this college found itself before I came here. You'd have to either cut the college, or cut wages, or cut employees. Which is why I am asking you all to consider allowing us to go to the voters and ask them to continue four mills. And one of the things that I would tell you is, it's not enough for us to just say, "Four mills is what we need." We believe we have to tell you what we would do with that four mills. And we also hear that there are voices in Dearborn who want us to live within our means. Now, for the last 10 years-ish, we've been living within our means with four mills. But we have one major project that we need to get done, and that's the replacement of our Liberal Arts Building, which has been here for, I believe, 70 years, and it is not serving our students or our community well. And so, we set about trying to find a path where we could go to voters and go to board members and say, "We'd like to keep four mills, but we want to devote a segment of those four mills for a major renovation on our campus, and we want to signal to you that we hear you want us to live with less mills." And the way we've come up with that is something that John Sackowski is going to talk about in just a minute, but it is asking the voters and asking you to allow us to go to the voters for eight years for four mills. Now, most community colleges go for round numbers, and usually larger than eight years, but we've decided to ask for eight years, first, to say to you, "We hear you that you want us to try to reduce the property tax. Second, we believe that we can balance the budget, take some of our savings, and take one-half of one mill and devote that towards a $75 million project to tear down the K Building and the Campus Safety Building, and replace those with a large state-of-the-art success center." We've gone about trying to raise funds from outside of the college, including a $10 million grant from the state of Michigan, and we're hopeful to get more. But this would involve borrowing, and when a public institution like us borrows, we call that a bond, bonding $40 million for eight years, and during those eight years, we would be devoting one-half of one mill to paying the mortgage, so to speak, to paying the financial costs of borrowing that amount of money. And that's a 40-year loan, I'm sorry, that's wrong, that's why I should probably stop talking and let John talk, but it's a 25-year loan, and at 25 years, goodness knows, John won't be here, I may still be here, but we'll have only, we'll have managed not bankrupting the college. And for those of you who've met with me, you know, know that this is a thing John and I've worked on very hard, but the summary of it, and John's going to talk about it now, is taking these four mills, having the voters approve an eight-year, four-mill property tax, and during those eight years, one-half of one mill would be completely devoted to replacing the K Building. John, do you want to, how did you want to proceed?
I know in my discussions, we've talked to you about this, but I wanted to move this up.
Trustees, the spreadsheet that he's looking at, you have in your packet.
What we've done is take and identify a $75 million project to replace the K Building and to put forth a student success center with classrooms, with academic support, with student services to replace that building. With that, how would we do that on this, you see in 2024, again, these are as best information as we have, as I have today. We would borrow $40 million over 25 years. In this case, the rate that we're looking at is around 4.1%, which is a rate that I've talked to some of the number of folks out there who are in this business of procuring these kinds of amounts of money. So we would fund it with $40 million associated with the bond for the 75 million, another $10 million, which is in the state general budget this year, all we have to do is ask for it, and we're putting together the parameters on how to get that. We're guaranteed that funding, that $10 million. Another $5 million from other sources, and then what we would take to make up the rest of it, we would take $20 million out of our plant fund, plant reserves. Notice I didn't say general fund, I said the plant fund is what I, you heard about the general fund earlier today. The general fund is set up, and that surplus to carry us forward in economic times when the general fund has issues in the, what Dana didn't say was that we're showing that we're around $16 million, which is about 16% of our budget, so we're right on target for our reserves for our general fund. So with that, how does this line up? Well, in 2024, 2025, and 2026, you could see that the bond project would spend $5 million, the next year, $35 million, the remaining part of the 40, and then the $15 million from external funding, including the money from the state, part of it in '25, the rest of it in '26, and then local funding of $20 million in 2026. The next line down is the annual bond payment for 25 years that we would incur, a little over $2,500,000. And then, line three shows from our millage, our general fund. Right now, this year, for 2024, we're transferring $800,000 into the retirement of bonds from some of our older projects, the IEMP bond issue that we're putting in from the general fund to do this. What we're recommending is, in the next years, in '25 through '32, taking a half-mill, as President Cavalluna mentioned, of 2, taking $2 million, $3,750,000 was the one-mill, we're planning on taking $2 million of that, and having that toward payment of the outstanding bond for the construction of the new facility. That goes along swimmingly well through 2023, and then in 2033, what you see down in line four is we start, money that is going to the general, from the general fund as a transfer now to pay off our current bonds would start becoming free. $815,000, you can see there, that is the retirement from the old bond issue from 2008. And so, that money would no longer be needed to pay off that bond, we could use that and then pay off the two, part of the $2,500,000 bond issue for the replacement of the K Building. That continues on '34, '35, '36, where that money becomes available. Then, if you look in 2034, we have another bond issue. The money that we borrowed, if you recall, $15 million a few years back to fund the IEMP project, we're taking $1,305,000 of the general fund, it's a transfer to pay off that bond, that goes away. So, what we end up doing is, you can see, we stopped the half-mill of $2 million, and then, starting in 2033, used the monies from the old bonds that now become mature and no longer have to pay on them, to pay off the funding for the new project. Let's see if I can move this a little to the right or left, if I mess this up. I got help behind me to deal with this. There we go. So, we then look at the future years, '35, '36, '37, and '38, it's really interesting because again, we have another bond issue coming off the books, coming off the books, and then I have $1,400,000 from the infrastructure fund to be used as payment. So, that's on line 41, you can see that those are the net impact on our reserves in the plant fund. It gets as high as 2034 at $28 million, but then starts dropping, and by the time you get to 2048, when I'm 96-years-old, we're almost break-even back to putting back our total reserves into the plant fund. Again, not touching the general fund reserves, the plant fund. So, by taking this project over 25 years, by using a half-a-mill for eight years off of the bond issue, the retirement of the old bonds that are out there, the IEMP, the 2008 bond, the 2009 bond, the infrastructure fee that we collect, and there's no inflation in here, I haven't increased the infrastructure fee at all because, and kept it the same just for making things easier to look at and evaluate, but $1,400,000 in 25 years, it may be more than that, and more of the retirement may be taking place. But the thing that stays static is that $2,500,000 for the payment of the $40 million bond over 25 years. So, to answer your question, yes, we can do this, we can replace that building. We need eight years of half-a-mill, and then after eight years, go back to the voters and only ask for a renewal of three-and-a-half mills versus the four mills that they've been, that would be levied over eight years.
Thank you, John. So, trustees, the language that I circulated to you that would be put on the ballot that is also up for discussion today, may seem surprising to you because it says "a new millage." And the reason it says "a new millage" is because we currently have two separate millage periods. One is for one mill, and that one goes until around the middle of next year, and then there's a three-mill millage that goes until around the middle of 2025. So what we're going to be doing is telling the voters, if you all approve us to do it, is that we are extinguishing both of those and doing one four-mill millage for eight years. And it will be on us to explain that it is, on the ballot, it is describing itself as a new millage, but it is eliminating four mills that are currently there and bringing four mills back together for eight years, which I know that, I think it was Trustee Pelichkov asked me specifically to see the proposed language, which is what I circulated to the board. So, I'm happy to take any questions. I recognize this is a very big decision, which is why I continue to stand ready to meet with any and all of you on any concerns or questions you have, and we can do that now, later, or some of us have already begun.
Questions for Mr. Cavalluna or Mr. Sackowski on the numbers? So this is something that you would want to have as an action item in November, so that we can have the wording to the clerk's office in time for the primary election next spring?
That's correct. And the language that I circulated to the board is the language that, if the board is willing, that's what I would like to have as an action item for November's Board of Trustees meeting.
Is it in any of the documents that you gave us tonight?
No.
Questions from any of the trustees on this? Trustee Mosip, do you have a finger up?
Yep.
All right.
So, if you can give us historical, I know this happened before you came, President Cavalluna, on the extra mill that we approved in 2015, or the voters approved in 2015. What was the purpose for it, and also, when it was renewed again in 2018, if you can shed light on the purpose for both renditions?
Yes. Trustee Mosip, I will not venture a guess as to what Trustee Mosip, I will not venture a guess as to what was going on in, I want to make sure I get the date right, 2015. And I know, and I would just tell you, I would respectfully request that administration officials not answer that question because I know it is an issue that is of differing views by elected trustees. And I wasn't here. I can tell you that in 2018, I was here when we did renew the one mil. And I, at that time, and I can find the reports so that you can see them, Trustee Mosip, we did present reports that outlined what we would do with that mil. And it was operational. It was not, it was not capital, project-based. Much of that was trying to revamp and redo our enrollment efforts, and a lot of it went to marketing and communications. But what I can do for you is bring those board reports back to you so that you can see. Because I felt, and frankly, I would invite other trustees, if they have memories of this, I felt that we should explain to you all what we were going to do with this one mil, and that was necessary to get you all to support it. And then when we took it to the voters, who overwhelmingly approved it.
My memory would be that that process had begun before you were in your role. That sounds right. Trustee Pellicoff?
I will say that I was on the board during one of the renewals at the lease, not the original one. But it was always intended as an operational necessity. It began when the college was in dire financial straits and was close to closing its doors financially, and we needed to shore up the bank accounts, so to speak. And as we continued on, inflation and the concern of trustees to raise tuition, to an extent to cover revenue losses, continued to be an issue. And so we continued to need the revenues that the millage was producing. But it was purely for operational reasons. We didn't have a specific project. But I will say that we always had our sights on infrastructure needs and campus improvements, which correlates to the ability to attract students. And we already are seeing that we have that ability to get students from outside, but our campus does need improvements in order to continue to sustain us with the out-of-district students who will find appeal in better facilities. My memory is shady when it comes to the conversations that we had that time. I'd have to refresh it by looking at minutes or whatever, if any of those could be produced as to what kind of conversations we had. But we never intended to lose sight of how we could balance our revenue stream without having to make any more of a burden upon the tuition rates for students becoming an outrageous impediment. And so it was a balancing act of what the taxpayers would be able to support to offset those differences.
And my memory is also that all the collective bargaining units came and helped us at that point by renegotiating contracts. So we were, because of the financial crisis, we were trying to minimize the impact on students, get out of some issues that had happened in previous administrations, and ask for all hands on deck to help out with it. And that's where the board at that point, because I remember the presentations, went for that one additional mil to originally take it up to four.
And what we're asking now, I think, I think not only is it a good use of resources, I want to remind every taxpayer in our community, property taxpayer, we have the largest number of dual-enrolled students through our high school system. We provide a free college education with that $340 a year, which is something that you're not seeing happening in, I think, any other community college district, to the extent that you're seeing happen here. And we have multiple opportunities. And one of the things about improving the infrastructure here with that half a mil is going to free up space for early college students who are currently being housed in a basement here in the old property, and they will be able to have their own place to call home, and it will also help get more students enrolled into that program as well for $340 a year to parents who live in this community and pay those property taxes. So it has a real financial benefit in that regard as well.
Trustee Mosip?
Yeah, as I look into the, if we can get the slide back, the third or fourth from the presentation where it's showing the property taxes revenue. And as I recall, this discussion last year, when we were talking about the sustainability of the college, the tax base for Henry Ford College is probably the lowest in the state as far as I can remember.
Is this the slide that you were referring to?
No, I'm sorry, the bar graph, the property tax revenue slide?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, this one.
Okay, yeah.
Like, the numbers for Henry Ford is so dismal, so low, and it's, obviously, it's this problem, as I have learned, is because of the small tax base that we have, only of the city of Dearborn and a small area of Dearborn Heights. And I've thrown the idea of looking at different ideas of annexing nearby districts to Henry Ford College, which could bring tax revenue and also help those residents who are sending their students anyway to Henry Ford College and paying out-of-district to pay in-district. But I didn't find the same enthusiasm that I have from my colleagues to look into this because there are a lot of complications, both on the state law and how this college was founded and having also representing the district and the college. So I do see that, seems like the impact will be on tuition if this doesn't pass by the voters. And I'm concerned that we're combining both proposals into one. And what could be the impact if the voters don't approve this next year?
I can answer the last question there. Trustee Mosip, the three mil, and John, I'd like for you to just tell me if you agree with this, because I remember talking with you about this, but I don't remember what we agreed on. But the three mil would continue to exist. Is that right?
For one year.
Yeah, for one more year. So we would essentially cut one mil out. If we went back, if we went for a new millage that was four years, we would go back to what we've got now, which is a one mil that'll expire at the end of this calendar year but continue to be collected into '24.
Okay.
And then the same thing for the three mil, which expires at the end of '24 but will continue to be collected into '25. So if the voters turn down, if you all approve this, Trustee Mosip, and the voters turn it down, by the time they turn it down in February, we'd be getting close to stopping being able to collect on that one mil. And then we'd have to regroup and figure out what we want to do about the three mil. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
So can you go back to the voters and ask them for the same proposal because I've heard that you cannot do that?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I hope never to have to answer that.
The other concern that I have, this is also going at the same time that we're asking the voters also to do the hold harmless renewal for the district. So that's something to think about as we're putting this forward.
But it's an unfortunate situation where everything's coming due at the same time, and we don't necessarily have a lot of choice. And if we weren't a board for both entities, it wouldn't necessarily bother us because the other entity would have to deal with the other one. But because of our situation, it's both on our shoulders at least to decide on language and if we'd want to put it out there to the voters. One thing that I brought up to President Cavalluna several times over the last several years is the whole idea of operational versus something else. I had no problem supporting the IEMP because I could see that the benefits we were going to get from energy usage would offset the money that we were about to pay out for the bond, and I was good with that. And when I look at this one and I see that a portion of this is going to be devoted to putting a new building on our campus that gets rid of a very dated building and it upgrades the facility and then that part falls off, that's much more appealing to me than it's operational. So I'm happy that the administration has looked at ways that we can reduce what is operational and have more going, being devoted to specific project.
I just want to comment on what you said, that if we weren't the same board working both entities, strategically, you still would have to consider what the other entities do and keep an eye on what the city is doing too, moving forward. So it's a very valid question. You made a statement earlier that the employee took a head tool. Were you referring the first time we went out for that one mil?
Yes, I believe that's when all the contracts were being renegotiated, if that sounds right.
Are you talking about like in 2014 or when we went out for renewal?
I don't think anything happened in the renewal. I think it was just in originally.
Originally.
And I'm not going to say that it was at the same time, but it was the roughly, the same causes were affecting us. And I think at that point, and that was a couple of years before I was on the board, I think we were looking at everything possible to help the college out at that point.
Sure. And that was, that was great work. I remember, Trustee Petlicoff remembers that, yeah, the college was in trouble, and that's when employees, especially 1650, came to the table and say, we've got to roll up our sleeves and we went out and asked the taxpayers for the extra mil. And we went out and sold it, and it was an easy sell. But, there's always the but, our employees were made whole, were still asking the taxpayers for that extra one mil, just to keep things in perspective, that's all.
Any additional comments? All right. President Cavalluna, anything else on this item?
No, thank you for your attention.
All right. Next item?
Action items, citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda, non-agenda items for action who have submitted a blue card by 7:10 p.m. to the secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items, therefore speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or college employees. Please limit comments to three minutes. If during those three minutes the comments become personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant, your public comment may be interrupted or ended. We have one blue card. Dr. Boza would like to come to speak to the board about the AFO contract.
Well, good evening, board members and President Cavalluna. Just want to thank you for approving our contract. As President Cavalluna said earlier, this was a real overhaul. We bargained until the very last minute, and we did it in good faith. Dr. Nealon was on the team, as well as two other people from the HR and our executive board. But I want to thank you for approving the contract. We worked very hard. The college worked very hard on it also. Thank you.
Glad we were able to work together. Next item?
Next item? Let's see. Action item, move to approve action items, number one. I'm sorry. Are there any action items on this agenda which board members, the president wished to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the actions below.
There's only one, so.
There's only one. I'd like to see us do that.
Does anyone have any? You know what? Let's just go ahead with a motion.
Recommended action, move to approve action item number one, as recommended in this agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Barry, supported by Trustee Pellicoff. Any discussion on the action item? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
Next item, Board of Trustees Business, acknowledgements of correspondence.
An email came to the board earlier today to our P-12 email address with the invitation for the nursing programs bidding ceremony, which is December 15th, if I remember correctly. So that was one that I know that we all got for the college. Any other correspondents? Next?
Next, Board Committee Reports.
Trustee Pellicoff?
We did have the Audit Committee, as they said, by the report. But I'll add, because they didn't really talk about it, and Trustee Mosip did ask about it, we did have a clean, unmodified report that they will be, once the P-12 is finalized, because this is a joint report for both, once that is completed, it will be dated and sent out. There were no adjustments and no compliance issues at all, and they said it was one of the best reports that they had had. And we've been getting these for the last number of years now. So there is a draft letter that once it is signed and ready to be sent to the federal reporting offices, everybody will probably get it. In the past, we've all gotten a copy of that report as well.
And they praised the work by the college team that's been helping out with it. Any other committee reports? Next item?
Next item, request for information and our future agenda items.
Hearing none. Next item?
Next item, Board Member Commentary. I have a comment. I forwarded everybody, I believe, an email from MCCA that had training in December. Brandy Johnson, the executive director, had asked to see if there would be anyone from HFC that would like to take the training. I know in the past, we have, some board members have asked for additional training at the college level, and ACCT, for those that didn't want to travel, are going to be here locally. And I believe it's going to be, don't quote me, might be in Lansing. So I will resend that email to everybody, and if you would like to attend, I believe it's early December.
Thank you for that. Any other commentary? Next item?
Future meeting dates. There's a correction. Monday, November 13th, 2023, P-12 Board of Education Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Ranchy Boardroom. Monday, November 20th, HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom.
With that, we are adjourned. Everyone have a great evening.